On Energy and Environmental Protection Hearing to Order. Today is Thursday, January 30th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. We are in Conference Room 325 and also streaming via video conference. Today, we are going to rely on the protocol that was outlined at our last hearing. And if there are questions or concerns that come up, then we will remind folks about, you know, the expectations, but we'd like to move straight into the bills that we have to hear this morning. So we're going to begin with House Bill 974 relating to energy. This will allow the state to enter into step-in agreements for payment obligations arising under certain power purchase agreements and establish the Power Purchasing Cost Trust Fund, establish that revenues from online on-bill charges for power purchase agreements and accompanying reserves shall be held in trust by the state, and that independent power producer shall hold a beneficial interest in the revenue and reserve to the extent of the amounts owed under the covered power purchase agreements. Appoints, authorizes, and empowers an electric utility to serve as a billing collection, payment, and managing agent of the Department of Budget and Finance in the service of performing step-in agreements. The first on our agenda to testify is the deputy, oh, is the AG, and they're coming in from Zoom. Oh, in person, sorry, my apologies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Deputy Attorney General Ryan Wodinshy Almo for the Department of the Attorney General. We've submitted our written comments regarding this bill. Our principal concern is that we need to ensure that any obligations that the Department of Budget and Finance or the state takes on does not create any liability or obligation to the state other than the monies in the trust fund. Thank you very much, and we're available for questions that you may have.
Thank you. Next up, we have DCCA in person.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michelangelo. I'm the Executive Director of Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our testimony, providing written comments on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did fail to introduce my colleague. So my name is Representative Russo. I serve as the Vice Chair of this committee. To my right is the Chair of the Committee, Representative Nicole Lowen. And then we also have Representative Matthias Kush. So thank you for being here. Next up to testify, we have the PUC in support in person.
Aloha, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Max Markrich. I'm an economist at the PUC. I'm here on behalf of our Chair Leo Sunshion. We stand in support of this bill and our written testimony, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Nicole Bolgerino from Amoresco on Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
Is that working?
Not quite. Maybe turn your camera on.
Yes, I have turned it on. Not sure. Yes, I apologize. I'm not sure why it's not syncing with the video.
You have a camera cover, like a, over your camera?
There we go.
All right, I just hit another button to clear it and then reset it.
I've all done it.
Well, good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of HB 974. My name is Nicole Bolgerino. I'm the President of Federal Solutions and Utility Infrastructure at Amoresco. Amoresco is a leading clean tech integrator and renewable energy asset developer and or an operator. We have several projects online globally, but have made a large commitment in Hawaii over the past 15 years. Most recently, we completed the Kaponos Solar Project, which is a 42 megawatt, 168 megawatt-hour photovoltaic and battery project in Eva. As an independent power producer, this bill is important to us to support the increasing need for reliability in Hawaii and enable us to do, to provide the three critical renewable energy projects we currently have in the Stage Three with Hawaiian Electric. Due to the Hawaiian Electric's current financial status, the ability to obtain financing is extremely challenging and ultimately could result in not being able to provide the needed renewable power to Hawaii. With the aging and pending retirement of utilities, fossil fuel generators, none of the energy poses a risk of blackouts like what we went, experienced last year, and new renewable generation can provide reliable and affordable energy to the residents. Because this is so important to the energy reliability in Hawaii, we would appreciate passing this bill to allow us to work with all the stakeholders to amend the bills in everyone's satisfaction. So thank you again for the opportunity to provide the written testimony and hear this morning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Rebecca Dehev Matsushima from Hawaiian Electric in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Rebecca Dehev Matsushima. I'm Vice President of Resource Procurement for Hawaiian Electric, and Hawaiian Electric is here to testify in strong support of HB 974. Many independent power producers have raised concerns with the utility's credit rating, and that impacts on the developer's ability to obtain financing or to obtain financing at reasonable rates. This bill will help our customers by ensuring the development of new renewable energy projects, but at reasonable costs. The bill proposes a step-in agreement to mitigate the risk to IPPs due to the company's current credit rating, ensuring that payments from the IPPs will be made, but I want to be clear that it does not involve the use of any state funds whatsoever. And our amendments that we proposed to the bill in our written testimony provide further assurances that state funds will not be used, as well as assurances that the IPPs will be paid. We are proposing the establishment of a reserve account. The reason for this is because without the use of any state funds or the full faith and credit of the state backing this, we need to ensure that there are sufficient funds to pay the IPPs if there's any under recovery. But I want to be clear that that reserve fund from inception is held in trust by the state. It can only be used by the utility to pay the IPPs. It'll be held in a segregated account, and if not used, it will be returned to customers with any accumulated interest. Thank you in advance, or thank you for allowing us to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was the last of our testifiers in person or on Zoom. We also had testimony with comments from Department of Budget and Finance and in support from Plus Power, Hawaii Clean Power Alliance, the AES Corporation, and Clearway Energy Group. Members, is there anyone else who would like to testify in this matter? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Rep. Lowen, Chair Lowen.
I guess for HECO first. The Attorney General, well, a couple concerns expressed, but also specifically the concern about establishing the reserve account equating to an additional source of revenue for an electric utility at the cost of the customers by having a separate surcharge added to bills to help pay for the reserve account on this. And then testimony also from consumer advocates saying they think the amount being asked to be set aside might be greater than necessary. How would you respond to those concerns?
Sure. So just to clarify the amount, it's 15% of one month of the covered power purchase agreement. So not all of our public power purchase agreements, the bill only proposes to cover our Stage Three, which is our most recent procurement, and then our next procurement, the first round of IGP RFP. That equates to, 15% equates to approximately $3.5 billion, which would be recovered over 29 months for the Stage Three projects, which is about 8 to 16 cents per month for our customers. If you compared that to, some of the developers have told us that without a bill like this or a solution to our credit rating, they expect to see their costs increase 20 to 30%. So that'd be a 20 to 30% per month increase for the entire life of the project. So if you're comparing those costs for our customers, this is a really nominal cost versus if the bill's not there, you would see a much greater cost to customers to account for the higher cost of financing. And then, as I noted, it's only being used in the event of under recovery. Customers are responsible to pay 100% of the cost of IPPs. It's a pass-through. The utilities make no money off of our IPP contracts. If the developers charge us $5, we charge our customers $5, and then we pay the developers that $5. If we ever under recover in a month, the mechanisms that exist today allow for a true-up on a quarterly basis. So even though we may have to front money for a month or two to pay the IPPs, we are made whole at that true-up process. And so it's not really adding cost in the long run to customers because they would eventually pay the true-up cost to cover any under recovery. But the reserve account provides protection to the IPPs. It allows their financing parties to be comfortable with the fact that there will be money on any given month to ensure that they're paid. And again, I think this bill would be much better for our customers than the consequence of paying a higher rate.
Thank you. And then, DCCA. Would you concur with that, I guess, that the cost to customers would be lower than the alternative of not establishing this and having their rates increase, that the cost be baked in?
I think it depends on, you know, we're relying on what the representations are. We don't know exactly what the magnitude of those, we don't have any sources of support. I would imagine there's some IPPs that can come in that aren't impacted by Hawaiian Electric's credit rating. And it's concerning, then, to tie this to credit rating on a going-forward basis. That's sort of the source of our concern.
Would you suggest a different mechanism to kind of ensure that this comes to an end when it's appropriate for it to come to an end? And I guess a follow-up question to that would be, does, do you think the bill has adequate language to ensure that any additional cost collected that didn't get dispersed to pay these contracts was returned to customers in full?
I think-
Without any, you know, takeout for administrative costs?
I think strengthening that language would be beneficial, yes.
Okay, maybe you can help us-
Prove some amendments, yes, certainly.
Okay. I think that's all I have at this time. Members, any questions? Sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Members, any additional questions? Representative Kush, okay, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on to our next measure, HB 338 relating to renewable energy clarifies that adjustments linked to premium interest rates for high-yield credit are just and reasonable. Authorize the Public Utilities Commission to include these incremental adjustments to the TAC, to the rate for electricity generated from non-fossil fuels. First to testify on our list is DCCA in person.
Morning, Michelangelo, Executive Director, DCA. Stand on our testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Next to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Maria Tome, testifying on behalf of Mark Glick. We will stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Public Utilities Commission in support in person.
Hi, good morning. Dino Park for the Public Utilities Commission. Will stand on our written testimony, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Rebecca Dehev Matsushima from Hawaiian Electric in opposition in person.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Dehev Matsushima, Vice President of Resource Procurement for Hawaiian Electric. We're testifying in opposition of HB 338 unless amended. Well, we understand that the PUC already has discretion to determine what is adjusted reasonable rate. We're not sure that this additional provision is necessary, but if it is, it can imply a preference for projects that have higher, are proposing higher rates due to the utility's current credit rating. We think the bill that we just heard was a much better solution, which would hopefully help to avoid higher rates. But if we, that bill does not pass, or even if it does and a certain level of higher rates are needed, we do think that adding language that would require IPPs to show the commission through clear and convincing evidence that the reason they're asking for the higher rates is in fact due to our credit rating and a higher cost of financing should be mandated by the law so that it's there and there's no question when it comes to hearing these projects before the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have, oh, that's all we have to testify in person or on Zoom. We have Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in support, and we also have an individual in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Lowen.
First for DCCA, can you just, I guess, walk us through the, how this would happen? Because your testimony said this could unintentionally adversely impact the competitive procurement process for renewable resources on an ongoing basis, resulting in higher electricity rates for utility customers?
The, yes, certainly. The concern is that if, there's supposed to be a blind competitive bidding process. If folks know that they can come in at a higher rate and they can charge, they're allowed to get recovery on a premium interest rate, with, they would have to provide some sort of support for that, I would imagine. But what's to say that they're going to go out and get the best financing that they possibly can? That's the concern. And that's what the competitive procurement process is intended to, one of the things a competitive procurement process is intended to achieve.
All right. So basically removing incentives to seek out the best interest rate? And there was a suggested amendment from Hawaiian Electric that, I guess, it would stipulate that adjustments required to compensate for unavoidable increases in financing costs from the utility's credit status if proven by the producer by clear and convincing evidence. So that would be page four, line 12 to 13. Sorry, I should have had that pulled up in advance. I don't know if you had a chance to review that?
Have not had a chance to review it, but I do see it. I think that would be helpful as one mitigating mechanism.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Is anyone here from Hawaii Clean Power Alliance? Doesn't look like it. Okay, then. All right, thanks, Chair.
Any other questions?
This could be for DCCA or Helco, HECO.
Who are you asking, DCCA?
Well, let me ask a question and can both rush the stand duet. It's just regarding this, do independent power producers have the option, once they secure a contract through the PUC and HECO, to refinance their debt? So would there be some motivation to get a, you know, have this offset for a premium interest rate and then 18 months down the line refi into a lower debt load and avoid scrutiny of a premium interest rate? You know, just basically the arbitrage between those two interest rates?
So I think DCCA, can you come up, please?
They do have that ability. I think that would be beneficial to put some sort of limitation on it, a time limitation, if there was to be an allowance for a premium interest rate, where we go back and review the reasonableness of the pricing and whether that rate is still reasonable from a repair's perspective, considering the risk of the IPP. And we'd also like to generate IPPs who have the strongest financial strength, and they're the ones who are going to be, have, they're the ones who are going to get the projects into the ground, and they're the ones that are most likely to stick around.
Helco, or HECO, I'm sorry, from Hoi Island. I saw you about to go up.
I would just like to reiterate that developers can refinance their projects at any time that they want. So if they choose to finance at a higher rate and then sometime down the line, unless the contract provides mechanisms to ensure that, you know, when they refinance, you can lower the rate, or the commission were to, you know, make them come back in, they could take advantage of that ability.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next measure, HB 337 relating to renewable energy. This measure would require inappropriate monies for the Public Utilities Commission to establish standards requiring each electric utility company to remove from their rate base a commensurate amount of costs related to fossil fuel resources when adding new or converted renewable electric energy and renewable energy resources. First to testify, we have DHHL in person in support.
Aloha, Kailaka, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee, O'Orion Aleal Ko'Inoa, DHHL's Nahazza Government Relations Program Specialist. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure, and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Hawaiian Electric in opposition in person.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is James Abraham. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in opposition to House Bill 337. We believe this bill fundamentally misunderstands how regulated public utilities recover their costs, in particular for large capital costs, such as, you know, this bill's looking at power generators. And we do think that the Public Utilities Commission's testimony summarizes these issues pretty well. We do want to reassure the committee that we are making progress on retiring these aging fossil fuel units. We have a publicly available integrated grid plan that was accepted by the PUC, which lays out our long-term plan for retiring these units. And that plan models, you know, how we can retire these units without sacrificing reliability and stability of the grid. The PUC also has us file a fossil fuel retirement report to track our progress. Most recently, you know, we retired the Honolulu eight and nine units in the end of 2023, and at the end of 2024, we retired YO units three and four. So just want to emphasize that we are making progress. However, it is imperative that as we seek to retire these fossil fuel units, we don't do so in a way that jeopardizes the reliability and stability of the grid because these larger baseload units, they serve other functions other than providing energy. They're known as ancillary services, where they help, you know, regulate the voltage and balance the entire grid. So simply because a, for instance, a solar plant provides a certain amount of energy on the grid, we can't just take off that same amount of energy from a fossil fuel unit because the fossil fuel unit also serves these important other functions to help balance the grid. With that, I ask that the committee please defer this measure and allow the public With that, I ask that the committee please defer this measure and allow the Public Utilities Commission to continue its oversight in our fossil fuel retirements. Thank you, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. That's the last person we have to testify in person or on Zoom for this measure. We also had comments from the PUC and testimony from Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in support, as well as from an individual in support. Is, are there any other, are there any folks, or would you like to provide testimony in the measure?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair Members of the Committee, Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office. The Chief Energy Officer wanted to comment on this bill, that there is validity to reduce costs when offsetting load with renewables that backs out fossil fuels, a large portion of that savings is from not paying for fuel that is not burned, and also cautions that there needs to be consideration for energy reserve capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional testimony? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Okay. No ques- Representative Kush.
All right, make it fast. Since I never finished my electrical engineering degree, I just had a quick question, what role do traditional fossil fuel generators play in the grid with the, I think it's a 60 megahertz that you have to evenly provide? Do they have any role in that, or is that just through other means?
Yeah, so I am not an electrical engineer, but these plants do provide these services so that if that voltage level is dipping, they can ramp up a little bit to help even it out at that 60 hertz level, or if it, you know, goes a little too high, you know, it helps balance the, the load as the load fluctuates throughout the day. So they serve that role because their baseload, so they're running all the time, whereas maybe a solar plant is only running when there's sun available.
Okay, so the solar or wind can't provide that correction as easily, or is it just technically, is, or is there technology that provides that pretty stably for those resources as well?
So historically, it's been the baseload plants that have provided those services. We've seen, you know, the more recent design of the solar plants is to pair them with the battery storage, so there are some limited services, balancing services that those could provide, but again, it's not on the level that we need to balance the entire system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next measure, which is House Bill 879 relating to cesspool conversions. This would increase the maximum grant amount for the cesspool compliance pilot grant project from $20,000 to $30,000, and establish positions within the Department of Health for the cesspool compliance pilot grant project, and also appropriate funds. The first to testify is the Department of Hawaii and Homelands in support, in person.
Aloha Ho, Oriana Leal of DHHL, we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. As outlined in our testimony, there are approximately 2,500 cesspools on Hawaiian homelands, and we understand the urgency to address this issue with, before 2050. Every dollar that is afforded to our beneficiaries helps especially because the more time that we have or take for this, the more inflation and costs that is accrued for our beneficiaries. So we stand on our written testimony in support and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Department of Health in support on Zoom. In person. Sorry.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, John Nagato, Department of Health, the department stands on its written testimony in support with amendments, thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition in support on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Lynn Mia Hira, representing the Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition. I stand on our written support that we submitted, and I'm sure my colleagues will also go into a lot of detail about how we all agree that this is a serious problem, but we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Ted Boland from Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, in person.
Thank you Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Peruso, Ted Boland for the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Happy cesspool day to all. This is, cesspools are the biggest wastewater pollution problem in Hawaii. Eighty-three thousand cesspools need to be upgraded by 2050. They put 50 million gallons of wastewater directly into our groundwater every single day, and so we got, everybody I think acknowledges we have a big problem. As the last speaker said, we have to figure out how to pay for it. This bill, 879, is one of the ways in which we can get some help in paying for it, at least for some people. Some low and moderate income people will be able to get grants in this bill up to $30,000. That's important to raise the amount because the costs in many places are high enough that you need to go beyond the 20,000 that were in Act 153 of 2022. So I hope that you will pass this bill and provide some relief to some homeowners who need to upgrade. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Next to testify, we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors in support, in person. Seeing, no one. We're going to move on to the next testifier, Stuart Coleman, Y, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support, in person.
Good morning Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Peruso, Committee Members, Stuart Coleman for Y, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations. Mahalo for the opportunity to share testimony today. I'll stand on my written testimony, but wanted to kind of elaborate on what Ted Boland was saying, that this is important because average range of prices can be anywhere, and we've done some conversions ourselves, from, you know, low twenties up to 40,000 and more. So raising the amount of the grant is good. One point that I might make is that if the purpose is for low and moderate income folks, making it a rebate is sometimes very challenging for them because they don't have the money upfront, and so maybe if it could be done in installments, finding out some way that, you know, to pay contractors and engineers for the early work, and then making sure that the work is done before it's finally paid out, that would be my only recommendation. But I'm available for questions and mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That's the only, that's the last testifier in person or on Zoom. We did have testimony from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support, and additional testimony all in support from four individuals. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Loewen.
For Department of Health. As far as the positions in this bill, there's another bill that also has position, three positions in it and creates the new section. Would you, I don't know what the odds are of getting five positions, so would the positions outlined in the other bill, like which would, which would be priorities? I mean presumably if we add new staff members, there would be someone available to put some time towards man, towards managing the grants?
I think the, if I had to choose, I'd choose the three positions, I, I, that's what you're asking. When I looked at both of the bills, for this one, I think we put in, because we're thinking about the grant program, so because of the experience from the last grant program, we specified an engineer and then we specified a fiscal person, an accountant, because we do need help working with ASO to get the money out.
Yeah, but presumably those positions would do more, each would do a little additional work besides just this grant program.
And, and they do, I mean even how we did the last time, without even any staff, the current staff has, you don't, you're not just administering, so like when we do our SRF, you also have to PM, you have to project manage them, and it's because the projects are so small but numerous, it's, yeah, it's, it's a lot more, like you said. But then the, the other one for the, the section or the possible section, they would do probably something similar, but I think you're asking a little bit more, so I think we would probably move towards the three positions rather, and then hopefully this can be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Members, any other? Rev Kush.
Thank you. Yeah, please, no, Department of Health.
Yes, Department of Health, yes, please.
Wanted you to get your steps in.
Sorry.
So looking at this, there's a cap of $5 million, and the difference between 20 and 30,000 is 166, 67 versus 250 applications processed. Does your office, based on the recipient's, the grantee's needs, step up? Like, you know, one applicant might be available for a $10,000 grant? Or are these flat-based grants to help fulfill their total cost? Even if it doesn't meet the entire cost, or how?
Yeah.
I couldn't tease that out of the bill here.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, so I think what you're saying is, from the past, we would, the applicant would be eligible for the full 20, and I would say like 99% of them need the full 20, it usually, costs usually go over that. But there are projects that we didn't pay out the full 20 because of just the eligibility of the receipts. We did a lot of like fiscal checking and making sure that they were licensed and all that kind of good stuff, so sometimes they, they just weren't able to give us just how they paid for things, we weren't able to reimburse them legally, so, but we don't, we just give them the full amount, is what I think what you're asking.
Okay, so this, this would basically result in 167 conversions versus 250?
Yeah, the math comes out like odd, and then we'd have, so even when we did the 250 for 20,000, we actually stopped around, I think, 200 at first, because we wanted to see how those move, and if some people drop off, then we had people on a waitlist, because we had way, way more people than we would ever give out, so we had to prioritize them by time, and then make, only the ones that are eligible move forward, and then have some on reserve, and then, but I think, and even our comments were kind of asking, would the people that already got 20, would they also get an extra 10, you know, because I don't want them to start to wait, because they think, oh, I acted fast, I only got 20, they got 30, I might as well wait, maybe they're going to up it to 40, you know, and I didn't know how to resolve those kind of thoughts, so.
Okay, and you don't have any, you don't look at it, the grantee, the, the grant, the grantor, no, the grantee is not looked at, like whether they're at 100% AMA or 140 or whatever, whatever level they might be?
I mean, we look, we look at just-
As far as the grant you give them, it's just a flat?
Yeah, as long as they're below the, the AMI that was specified, how below, we didn't have a priority for that, no.
Copy, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 379 relating to the environment, requires newly installed or modified individual wastewater systems that are near the shoreline or likely to pollute groundwater to include denitrification capacity. First to testify, we have DLNR in support, in person.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, David Sakota for DLNR will stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Department of Health with comments on Zoom, or in person. All the, all the Zoom notification is, you're all going to be in person? Okay. Is there someone on Zoom?
Okay. Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, John Nagato, Department of Health, the department stands on its written testimony providing comments and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, in person.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, thank you again. One of the reasons that cesspool pollution is a problem in Hawaii is that it fertilizes algae. The nutrients that run off from the land fertilize algae that smothers corals, and so it's very important to get the nitrogen out of the waste, and this bill works in that direction. Particularly with wastewater systems that are close to the coast have the most impact, and so the bill would provide that wastewater systems that are close to the coast, within 200 feet I think it is, have denitrification technology, which is certified to meet the guidelines, and this is technical, of the National Sanitation Foundation and American National Standards Institute Standard 245. I say that for the, for the people who are focused on the details of this. We need to have some protection for wastewater runoff from cesspools and other individual wastewater systems that affecting the reef. This bill would do that, and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors with comments in person. Not here. Stuart, next we have Stuart Coleman from Y in support, in person.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members, Stuart Coleman from Y. I'll stand on my written testimony, I think, building on what Ted said is, we have now pretty much indisputable kind of research and science about how the nutrients from wastewater is killing the reefs, and it's coupled with, so you have increasing nutrients and then decreasing herbivore fish that would be able to eat the algae that's smothering the reefs, and so it's a, you know, compounded problem. And, you know, I think one of the most important things about this is that as we move forward, we've already seen the damage, and it is, it is substantial, and so places like Puakoa and Maalaya, Maui, and countless other places, it's, we've seen reductions from like 80% coral reef cover on the ocean floor to 8% or less, and so it's dramatic, and so in coral restoration efforts on the Big Island, they can't even work in those areas because there's not enough infrastructure to build on. And that, you know, just to remind people that our coral reefs are, are basically our resilience against storms, floods, tsunamis and, and such, so stand on, yeah, support for this bill, and if any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Nahalani Parsons from the Hawaii State Association of Counties in support on Zoom.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Nahalani Parsons on behalf of the Hawaii State Association of Counties. We stand on our testimony and strong support of this measure and available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also had testimony in support from the Office of County Clerk, Council Services Division, and Coral Reef Alliance in support, and two additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions?
Department of Health. I guess, just asking you, our intention is to move the bill forward, but if, if DOH can take some time, because I know your testimony indicated concerns about how the decision was made about the criteria, and if you can review and let us know what kind of language you might prefer.
Sure, I was, I tried to read the report that you sent over, thank you. Although we understand what the report is saying, and we understand the intent of the bill, we support the intent of it as well, we wanted to make sure that those criteria, because they're very specific and they're very large span of area, because again, I'm, we're also in support of aerobic treatment units and aerobic treatment units that have 245, 50% nitrogen removal, but they are more expensive, so we have to balance that with, they're used appropriately at the appropriate locations, and we're not overusing it where it's not necessary.
I mean, I guess with it being so specific, there could also be a situation where you might want to require this and would be unable to, because it's very specific. So I don't know if you would prefer kind of more open-ended language, but that might leave some people concerned that it would be applied too broadly, so.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I think we'd run into more instances, because, I mean, we do, we do require a lot of them, like currently, you know, our 50-foot, we do require 245 when it's a 50-foot setback from any, us, you know, water body, and then when it's in groundwater, we also on top of that require UV disinfection. So that's already something that people are already commenting back to us, they don't like, but, you know, to protect our waters, we do that, so. Yeah, we're, we just want to make sure that we're-
So you're already requiring this kind of extra filtration-
Correct.
-for certain ones?
Yes, correct. We already require 245, NSF 245.
Because I think there was past discussions where, you know, Department of Health had indicated to us they weren't, they would want something in statute to make sure they felt comfortable exercising their authority to do that, but it sounds like that's resolved.
So we, we do it through a variance process, because people don't meet the setback requirements, so that's when we require them to use the ATU aerobic treatment unit with NSF 245. But we are, and, and we've talked about this with other bills, that we're already pushing to do rule amendments, revisions, so that's something that we're, we already understand that we have to be more clear, and instead of going through a variance process, we want to just put it in the, the rule, like you guys are kind of requesting, we just, we're going to stick with the current distances from the shoreline, but we didn't have any elevation distances. The only elevation distance we have is when they can't maintain three foot from the bottom of- from the bottom of the disposal system to the groundwater.
So your rules would say 50 feet? Is that what you have proposed, or you're still working on it?
Um, we're still working, but we're probably going to go with 50, because that's the setback already in, in Chapter 62, that has always been there. So when they're within that, that 50-foot setback, that's when we require a 245 aerobic treatment unit.
So that, that additional 150 feet or whatever, I mean, I just, I guess, that would be a question for, you know, someone who's kind of done the science on it-
That's, that's, yeah. That's what we're looking for. I mean, we don't have the, the research arm to, to look into that. So we want to know, is that extra 400% distance-wise? Is that worth, you know, requiring people to pay more, um, for, for the extra unit? So that, that's all we're concerned with, because we're the ones that are going to have to kind of show the people that the data shows at 200 feet or less, you need to have this. And then the other thing is, the elevation thing is quite broad. You know, 1,500 above sea level is a lot of people. So we didn't, and it said, I think it said or, so, you know, you might be-
I think it was that elevation and had those soil characteristics, but like you-
Oh, okay.
So it was both together. But I think in your testimony, you were kind of indicating you wouldn't be able to know whether those soil characteristics-
Well, the, the elevations we could, but then the, the other part, the other component with the 5,000-year-old substrate, that's another thing that, I, I'm not a geotek or, or geophysicist. I wouldn't understand that.
Well, I want to keep working on it, so think about, I think, what would be appropriate.
Okay, will do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rep Kush?
So, representing Hilo and considering lower Puna, there's only a few communities that would be above this 1,500-foot level. Um, and not being a geotech, but knowing somewhat about the substrate, this, the 5,000-year-old criteria would impact larger, most of Hilo and a lot of lower, if not all of lower Puna. Um, what's your cost estimate that the denitrification process costs? I mean, what would that, how much does that bump up on a system?
I, I haven't been in the private side for about six, seven years. I don't want to throw, I heard the numbers are getting kind of high, so.
What ballpark?
Uh, I, I, I don't know the, the difference between just an ATU with NSF 40, which is aerobic treatment, 30, 30 milligrams per liter, or going to 245. Um, there is a difference, because it is a completely different process to denitrify. But I, I don't want to throw-
And that's an aerobic process, which requires a power element?
Uh, correct, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the next measure, HB 798 relating to wastewater management. Clarifies the exemptions to the prohibition on discharging any wastewater or raw sewage into state waters after December 31st, 2026, including an exemption for treatment plants having a treatment capacity of less than 10 million gallons per day. First to testify, we have Department of Health with comments in person.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair, and Committee members. My name is Darryl Lum, and with the Department of Health. The department stands on our written testimony with comments and offered amendments, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony from Mayor Bisson, Coral Reef Alliance, Hawaii Viola, and an individual, um, I, I apologize. So the mayor, Hawaii Viola, and the individual are in support, and the Coral Reef Alliance is in opposition. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Loane?
Um, sorry, Department of Health, again. Oh, hi. Um, the energy provision in there, if you can just clarify, I mean, is that basically, like, uh, well, what was the origin of that? It's just kind of a very arbitrary provision?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm not really sure what the, of how this all came about. Um, we, what we had in the testimony is that we, we don't really, because we don't regulate clean energy, we don't support or oppose it. Um, it's just that we thought that, um, the, that term "clean energy" is not defined anywhere, or we couldn't find any definition. So, um, we thought that having something that maybe would clarify, would satisfy that condition would be, um, a good idea. So, for example, if, uh, if a sewage treatment plant utilizes photovoltaic panels, and if that is adequate, then maybe something like that in the statutes would be good.
And so is it basically like, uh, if you're making clean power at the site of your wastewater treatment plant, it's then more okay to pollute?
Um, I think the way the, um, the way the, the current statute is written, it says, um, that you would have to utilize sewage to produce clean energy. Um, so when talking to others about this, um, they, it sounds like you would probably have to either take the biosolids, the sludge, and then maybe-
Sure, but I think what the, the amended version that we're considering is asking-
Oh, to just produce clean-
To say they can just make clean energy of any kind, and then count that against their wastewater discharge? Is that, am I reading it correctly?
Um, so I, I think in the bill, it says that, um, uh, the wastewater discharges are prohibited, except if you produce clean energy and in your compliance with these, with the statutes. Um, we, um, I, I don't know the rationale or the justification for amending it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any additional questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 378. Sorry, my apologies, 376 relating to cesspools. Accelerates the dates for the required upgrades, conversions, or connections of Priority Level 1 and Priority Level 2 cesspools to 2035 and 2040 respectively. Appropriates funds to implement the cesspool compliance pilot grant program, reestablishes the cesspool upgrade, conversion, or connection tax credit. First to testify, we have, um, the AG's office with comments on Zoom, actually in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Joanna Yeh. I'm from the Department of the Attorney General. We submitted testimony noting that there was a single subject issue with this bill, and also provided some recommendations on how to address this issue. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support, in person.
Good morning, Guanyama Morala, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support, thanks.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have DHHL in support, in person.
Aloha, Mai Oriana Lial with DHHL. The department stands on its written testimony in support. As I mentioned, we have 2,500 cesspools on Hawaiian homelands, and majority of which are Priority 1 and 2. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Department of Health with comments on Zoom. Or in person?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony, providing comments, available for questions. Thank you.
Next to testify, we have Councilmember Heather Kimball from Hawaii Island in support. Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Bolin for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. The Department of Health, the, excuse me, under, under the statute, there are 83,000 cesspools that are supposed to be upgraded by 2050. We need to get going. Um, you can't wait till 2049 and then do them all. So, uh, this bill is a reasonable accommodation where it moves up the Priority 1 and Priority 2 cesspools, which are the ones that have the most impact on the environment, to 2035 and 2040. That's less, that's more time granted than was in the recommendation of the Cesspool Conversion Working Group. And the number one recommendation of the Conversion Working Group was to accelerate the deadlines, because we need to get going, as I said. Um, that was 2030, 2035, this is 2035 and 2040 for Priority 1 and 2. So, as I say, I think this is a reasonable, um, way to get started working on the cesspools that have the greatest impact. Um, the bill contains an appropriation for the cesspool grant program, and also has a tax credit. But let's get going on the, on the upgrade of cesspools Priority 1 and 2. Uh, this is a reasonable way to go. I urge the committee to pass the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have Hawaii Realtors with comments in person, not in attendance. Nahalani Parsons from Hawaii State Association of Counties in support on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, aloha, Chair and Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Nahalani Parsons, on behalf of Hawaii State Association of Counties, in strong support of this measure, and we appreciate the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition's testimony, available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom. Not present. And finally, we have Stuart Coleman from Vi in support, in person.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee member Stuart Coleman from Vi. Um, I will stand on my written testimony, but just add again the, the importance, we've had scientists tell us that in certain areas of Hawaii, if we wait till 2050, that will be too long for, for the reefs. Um, is that, and with this amount of nutrients, the increased development, decreasing herbivore fish population, that the reefs might not be able to withstand that much, um, kind of pressure from the, the overgrowth of the algae, so. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have testimony in support from the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii, and also from Hawaii Viola, along with, um, testimony from an, in support from an individual. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure?
Hi, my name is Lynn Miahira from the-
If we could just, uh, pause for a second, there's someone who's going to the podium, and then we'll come to you.
Clinton Piper, Department of Taxation. Um, we did file comments on this, is, are you folks in receipt of that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'll stand on the written comments, nothing further.
Thank you. And then on Zoom?
Hi, my name is Lynn Miahira from the Public Access to Sunscreens. Sorry, I forgot to submit my written testimony in support of this, but wanted to voice our support for this bill as well.
And if you could also submit written testimony, so that we have you in the written record, that'd be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Okay, moving on to the next measure. House Bill 734 relating to wastewater systems requires the Department of Health in consultation with various agencies and professionals to review rules and practices and propose changes that have the potential to make wastewater systems and cesspool upgrades more affordable without compromising water quality. Appropriates funds. First to testify, we have Department of Health in support on Zoom. Or in person?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have DHHL in support, in person.
Aloha, Mai Oriana Lial of DHHL. Um, the department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. We currently, um, work in collaboration with the Department of Health and other necessary agencies, and we intend to continue to do that. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have UH in support, in person, from UHC Grant. Not present. We also have Lynn Miahira, Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition, in support on Zoom.
Yes, we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support, in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, again. Um, this is 734 we're dealing with?
This is 734.
Thank you, I get a little confused with this many bills. Thank you. Um, this one deals with the rules and practices of the Department of Health. We are, this year in our package of bills, looking for ways to make cesspool upgrades more affordable, because as I said before, it's very expensive. Rate, uh, homeowners need assistance. And one of the ways that they could get assistance is if the rules of the department and practices were amended. Uh, they were last proposed 10 years ago. I know this because I worked on them, and it's been a while. So they need some upgrades. There's things that have been done in other jurisdictions that might make it less expensive to upgrade your cesspool. We should look at that. The department should look at that and its rulemaking, and decide ways in which it could save people money. So this is all about affordability. I urge you to pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Erika Perez, Coral Reef Alliance, in support on Zoom. Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Coleman from Vi in support, in person.
Good morning, uh, Chairs, Committee members. Uh, Stuart Coleman from Vi, will stand on my written testimony. Um, but to echo what Ted Bolin said, um, all of our bills that we've, are part of our package, are really aimed at reducing cost, um, because they are some of the highest in the country, and there are practical ways that we can do this, and we feel, feel this bill would be really instrumental in doing that.
Thank you. That's the last of our testifiers in person or on Zoom. We also had testimony in support from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Hawaii Viola, and the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii. Um, in addition, we had four individuals providing testimony in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Excellent, we're moving on to the next bill. The next measure is HB 736. Sorry, I'm also, so many cesspool bills. Um, relating to wastewater systems establishes and appropriates funds for a three-year new wastewater system and individual wastewater system technology testing pilot program within the University of Hawaii Water Resources Research Center. Requires interim and final reports to the legislature. First to testify, we have Climate Change Mitigation and Adoption Commission in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Laila Ramey with the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. We stand on our written testimony in support. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Um, next to testify, we have the Department of Health in support on Zoom. Or in person?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have DHHL in support, in person.
Aloha, no, Oriana Lial of DHHL. The department stands on its written testimony in support. As noted, we know that there is no one-size-fits-all in every ahupua, and we remain open to alternative technologies that may be available for our beneficiaries. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have UH Water Resources Research Center in support, in person. Not present. Moving on, we have Lynn Miahira, Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition, in support, on Zoom.
Oh, thank you, Chair. We stand on our written support for this bill, and echo the concerns, or the, um, you know, wanting to have multiple ways to, for people to address their cesspools in different parts of the state, and maybe there's new technologies out there that could help them. So mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, in support, in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Uh, this is one of our highest priorities this year. One of the ways that we, I, I referenced affordability in the previous bill. One of the ways in which we think we can save money for people is by looking at new technologies for wastewater. And there is a testing program, there has been a testing program at UH to evaluate different technologies, to help the Department of Health certify the new ones. Um, and the, the, the testing pilot program at UH Water Resources Research Center has not been in, in play for the last few years. We want to revive it. Um, and with help from UH studying these different technologies, that will help DOH certify what people can use, that will help people save costs. So this is important. It's not very expensive, it's a little bit of money for UH, but I think it will save money for cesspool owners many times over. I urge you to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Coleman, Vi in support, in person.
Good morning, Chairs. Um, I will add that, just a little background info. Roger Babcock used to head, head this program up, and it was very, you know, kind of successful and practical. When he went to become Director of E&amp;V, it stopped operating. And so we have been working with WRC, um, and they have the staff now, and the interest, and the time. And the great thing about this program is that it will be self-sustaining, because we, it's a, to do National Sanitation Foundation standards, it's very expensive. And so what this does is they use the exact same protocol of testing, and it's at a much reduced price, and use graduate students to do the work. And then it, you know, supplies DOH with the information they need that's researched for a fraction of that price. And we've already got a plant where we can do the testing, it's been set up. Um, so it's a, a good program that will help- So it's a good program that will help introduce these new technologies and give us the science and research we need to back them up.
Thank you. In addition, we have testimony from Coral Reef Alliance in support and the Nature Conservancy in support, along with the testimony of five individuals in support on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this particular measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Loane.
For either Ted or Stuart, just because this bill has a blank appropriation, and I think you mentioned it wouldn't cost much, so do you recall what was the amount from prior years? Because I thought it was, because, so we can note that in the committee report, because we've seen this bill multiple times.
Right. I'm sorry, the Wastewater Technology Center, the Wastewater Resources Center wasn't here to testify.
Yeah, I would have testified.
Yeah, they would be the better people. It's under $1 million. I don't remember the amount. Stuart, do you know more?
Because I thought it was $4 million in last year's bill.
Yeah, that was a different bill, and so we decided that was a complete pilot project, testing new things. We kind of realized this would be much more efficient because it's reviving a program that was already in existence. And so basically, they need a coordinator at WRC to head it up, because Roger Babcock's gone, there's not someone that can really work with DOH and everybody to coordinate, the new coordinate.
So what's the, do you know the dollar amount?
It would be definitely under $1 million, and so if we're looking at a three-year program, we were thinking at least maybe one and a half to two positions, someone to coordinate it, and then someone to head up the research, working with the graduate students. So it'll definitely be under $1 million per year, but we can work with WRC to give, you know, more exact budget.
Okay. That would be helpful. And then I would conclude that in testimony when it goes to its next committee, the dollar amount, because Finance Committee will want to see those, and it will help the bill if it's flushed out. Thank you.
Yeah, mahalo.
Any additional questions?
Actually, I have a quick question for--
Rip push.
Ted. Or actually, both of you. Has anybody ever done any research, especially with regards to ocean herbivores like keystone species, oohoo, koolae, like this? We're spending all this money on the land to address, because our keystone herbivores have been overfished and can't, like, protect the reef, so now we're making, trying to nullify our wastewater on the land. Has anybody ever looked at, like, if we had maybe more stricter fishing requirements, I mean, rules around herbivore species? Has anybody ever looked at that?
Is it possible to take this conversation offline? Because I'm not sure how relevant it is to the bill, and we do have, like, half of our agendas to go through.
And I'll just say that they, they are bills, there are bills for making sure those herbivore reef fish populations, and I can try to get those to you.
We'll take it offline. Thank you.
And Dr. Mark Hixson has done a lot of research on it.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to House Bill 735, relating to wastewater. It allows an individual wastewater system to serve up to five bedrooms regardless of the number of dwelling units or accessory units, whether attached or detached. Permits until June 30, 2030, certain new buildings constructed within a priority level three area as designated by the Hawaii Cesspool Prioritization Tool that contain up to five bedrooms to be served by an existing cesspool. First to testify, we have the Department of Health with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony with comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to testify, we have Joel Guy from the Honolulu Initiative on Zoom.
Hi, thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity to testify. I actually planned to come over this morning, but we got a, the storm kept me in Honolulu today, which is interesting. I appreciate your office allowing me to kind of get into the Zoom quickly. Like I said, I meant to be there in person. What really excited us most about this bill was that we're building a rental affordable workforce housing project in Honolulu that's for teachers and lifeguards, which are kind of our first responders. We're really vulnerable out here, and so it's interesting that I was trying to go to testify, and the storm kept me in Honolulu today, and to testify on a bill that would hopefully allow us to provide more of these units. We've got a really unique situation. We have this beautiful lot in downtown Honolulu, and we can do, it has room for three septic systems, and I don't want to get in the weeds on it because I know time is, you got a lot going on here, but thank you so much for letting me just share quickly what we're trying to do, and we have, we can do three septic systems on the property. We don't have sewer out here, and so you could do two buildings for each septic system, which will allow six units, but we have density. We could do 13 units on the property, and so, you know, those three five-bedroom septic systems get you to 15 bedrooms, so if, I guess the problem is if we did it in the current situation, we'd have to add another septic system for every time over the two buildings, and there's just no room on the property, but there's density there, and there's a need there. We've got no houses, you know, I'm sure most of you've been to Honolulu, but there's not a lot of workforce living in Honolulu anymore, if any, and so to be able to provide that for our lifeguards and teachers is just an incredibly special opportunity, and we'll do it either way, but we're really optimistic that we would have an opportunity to kind of, you know, create this model where we can do something a little outside of just that normal two per septic, because the capacity within the septic system is there, and thank you. I also sent in written testimony.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Stuart Coleman as an individual testifying in support in person. Thank you. For this measure, we had Hawaii Viola testifying, or providing testimony in opposition, and then one additional individual testifying in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Chair Loane.
Department of Health. I guess I'm curious about, what is the actual federal definition of large-capacity cesspool, like the actual wording?
I don't memorize the actual wording either. They, we just usually go to the website, but roughly for residential, it's when it's multiple dwellings.
And how, is dwelling also defined in federal law? Or is it, do you go by a state law definition of dwelling?
We always defer to Kate Rau at EPA, who handles the large-capacity cesspool program.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand, because if there's no way around federal law, there's not a lot we can do about it, because we can't permit connection, you know, creating new large-capacity cesspools that will be immediately illegal, because anyone who's not aware, these are illegal under federal law since, I think, 2005. So, but is there, but it also seems a bit irrational, because if, if it's not, if there is capacity and, you know, it's a home with, you know, maybe two adults or, you know, and you're adding an ADU that's going to have one adult in it, is it still, is there, is it still considered a dwelling if there's not a kitchen, for example, if it's an exterior bedroom? Are there any ways to work around it, or is it--
If it's--
Run afoul of federal law no matter what?
I won't be able to, like, clarify that if it's, if you're regarding large-capacity cesspools. Like, we always kind of stay out of, you know, defining it for them, because they're very specific on what they classify as large-capacity cesspools, because even EPA has told us that in Hawaii, because of the amount of large-capacity cesspools that we have in the state, they even have another classification that the mixed use, when there's a dwelling, one dwelling, but have business.
Well, there must be existing situations where there's a home and an ADU that are both connected to the same septic, so has, have those been classified as large-capacity cesspools by the EPA?
Well, if it's a septic tank, then no, but if it's a cesspool, yes. So, yeah.
Or cesspool.
Yeah, so cesspool, that is correct. How they've, from 2005 till now, gone after these single, these residential properties, we, again, we defer to that. We just stay within our realm that if it's a cesspool, an existing cesspool, and they haven't done anything, and it was built before--
Okay, sorry, I'm, I realize I'm asking the wrong questions, too. But so what about the question of connecting two dwellings to a septic?
You mean more than two.
Is it more than two that's the issue?
Yeah, so our current rules allow for two, and then this bill is asking for more than two. This question comes up all the time.
Yeah, comes up for my constituents as well.
Yeah, and honestly, like, in the short period that I've been in this position, we're already considering, like, we know, rule changes, and this is something that we don't want to just make, change the rule. I know what the intent is. I'm trying to find the data to support why this was, because when I look backwards, it's not, you know, crystal clear what the quantifiable amount for each dwelling. It's a dwelling and density thing, so some people believe that the more dwellings that you have, there is some incremental increase in the amount of flow, but we didn't quantify that. So we just do that in a general sense. So we're trying to quantify that, or if not, then do what you're asking.
But that's all under, there's nothing in federal law that talks about the septic, how many dwellings can be connected to a septic, so that's all under state--
Yes, and I, so my understanding from way back when, when they created HHR before 1991, when they were writing the first set of rules, there were, there was a lot of things they were referencing. There's a lot of wastewater manuals. One of them, I believe, was a septic tank, you know, practices manual, and it does have a lot of the stuff that we use as still today, setbacks and flow rates and everything. In there, it doesn't explicitly say that, it's just kind of leaning towards the larger and larger you go, that treatment plants are a better option. So I don't know if they rationalize that. Obviously, you go from one dwelling with five bedrooms to multiple dwellings with five bedrooms total. There is a difference, but they didn't, again, quantify that. So we're just trying to seek clarification, and we've already initiated, like, an Environmental Finance Center to start doing some research for us, even ahead of, you know, anybody forcing us to do it, the rules, because we want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. Are there any additional questions? Okay. Moving on to the next measure, House Bill 1421, relating to financing, establishes and appropriates funds for a cesspool conversion on bill financing program to be administered by the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority to provide low-interest loans to eligible homeowners for the upgrade, conversion, or connection of cesspools. First to testify, we have the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Lea Laramie with the Climate Change Commission. We stand on our testimony and support and the double question.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support in person.
Good morning, Guen Yama Murala, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony and support with comments. Just wanted to mention that the comments are to be inclusive and collaborative with our banking partners, local banks, and also we will work and collaborate with the Department of Health with some complexities about this bill. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we have Department of Health with comments in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony and providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This is another important bill. I've been emphasizing the importance of making cesspool upgrades more affordable, and this bill would provide a way to do that. I want to thank the Speaker for sponsoring it. The Green Infrastructure Authority, Guen just spoke about creating a non-traditional cesspool conversion on bill financing of low-interest loans to those who are unable to access financing on reasonable rates and terms, including low and moderate-income homeowners. So for those who are low income, a lower moderate income, who are trying to upgrade and need financial help, this may provide it in terms of low-interest loans. I think it's a great idea, and I think you should pass the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Lynn Miahira, Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition on Zoom in support.
Hi, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. We stand on our written testimony and support and believe that this is an important bill to bring together government, business, and, you know, a bunch of other people to help solve this problem, especially around affordability. So happy to see that there's multiple different avenues for people to get financing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Stuart Coleman in support in person. Oh, from VI.
Thank you. I'll stand on his support, very strong support for--
Thank you so much. In addition, we have testimony with comments from State Procurement Office and the Department of Budget and Finance, along with testimony in support from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party and the Coral Reef Alliance, the Nature Conservancy of Hawaii with comments, Hawaii Viola in support, and then the testimony of five additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to submit testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Okay. Moving on to the next measure, House Bill 749, relating to cesspools, creates within the Department of Health's wastewater branch cesspool conversion section, which shall be responsible for facilitating the conversion of cesspools within the state, establishes and appropriates funds for positions within the cesspool conversion section. First to testify, we have the Department of Health with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony to provide comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Lynn Miahira, Public Access to Sunscreens Coalition in support on Zoom.
Same here. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Next to testify, Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Ted Boland, testifying in support of this bill for the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. The Department of Health has a huge task facing it when it's responsible for the upgrade of 83,000 cesspools over the next 25 years. They're going to need help, and the existing wastewater branch is already fully subscribed with its tasks, so they need additional personnel. They're going to have to look for grants, managing for other financing, develop and manage comprehensive public information and outreach, form partnership with the counties, nongovernmental organizations, and the private sector relating to their responsibilities. So they're going to need people. This bill supplies a few FTEs for the Department of Health to get started. It needs to be a separate section of the Department of Health wastewater branch, so it's dedicated and focused on cesspool upgrades. And so this is a really good idea, really high priority, I think, to get started on the cesspool conversion program. So I urge you to pass the bill. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for listening to me on so many bills today.
It's all connected. Thank you. Next, we have Erika Perez from the Coral Reef Alliance in support on Zoom. Not present. And Stuart Coleman, VI, in support in person.
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Stuart Coleman from VI. I thought Ted was joking when he talked about National Cesspool Day, but today it seems like it fits. This was, since Chair Loane was in our cesspool conversion working group for four years, this was our top priority. I think everyone agrees that we really cannot tackle this issue without more staffing at DOH in a separate section that's really focused on this issue. Anna, available for questions? Mahalo.
So many top priorities. It's hard to navigate. So that's all the testimony we have for in person or on Zoom. We also had additional testimony from the Office of the Mayor, County of Hawaii, in support, the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support, Malama Pupukea Waimea in support, Nature Conservancy of Hawaii in support, Hawaii Viola in support, Resources Legacy Fund in support, Pacific Whale Foundation in support, and the additional testimony of six individuals in support. Are there any members of our audience who would like to provide testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Loane.
Department of Health. We just need to get, and this is a double referral, so I might defer decision-making to give you time to get back to me before we pass it out. We need to get the dollar amounts that you need for these positions, and if possible, if you know the position titles you would prefer, but if, yeah, if you don't have that, I think the dollar amount we need to send on to finance.
I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our final measure, which is House Bill 969, relating to waste or disposal facilities prohibits the construction, modification, or expansion of any waste or disposal facility on land that is near or above a significant aquifer as determined by the Department of Health. First to testify, we have the Department of Health with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Lynne Ichinobu, representing the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony for providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Can everyone make sure they're speaking into the mic when you do come up, because if not, people who are watching on stream won't be able to hear.
Thank you. Next, we have Solid Waste Division Chief, County of Kauai, in opposition. Then we have Ernest Lau, Board of Water Supply, in support in person.
Aloha, Chair and Members. Ernie Lau, manager for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply, in strong support of this measure. I just want to mahalo you for helping to protect our water resources. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Environmental Services, City and County of Honolulu, with comments.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Mike O'Keefe, Deputy Director, with the city's Department of Environmental Services. Our testimony was a little late, so I just want to come up here and reiterate some of the key points that were made, just so it's, I'm certain it's considered. It's important to note that if this bill were to pass and become law and locating a landfill above an aquifer would be prohibited, given the restrictions already imposed by Act 73 and other federal and state laws, the city would be left with no legally permissible and feasible options to site a landfill on Oahu. If this bill were to become law, the state could amend Act 73 to reduce or eliminate several of the restrictions in order to make potential landfill sites on Oahu available. Alternatively, if this bill were to become law and Act 73 was not amended, the city would have no choice but to pursue a currently legally prohibited expansion at the Waimea N'olag'och landfill. And lastly, you know, we just want to say this, you know, for now, Oahu needs a landfill. That landfill doesn't need to be in wahihua or over an aquifer, but the only legally available and feasible options right now are over aquifers. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one additional testifier, Sierra Club of Hawaii, in support on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We need to knock off the Sierra Club of Hawaii. I was going to just stand on our, you know, written testimony in strong support, but I did want to note, based on the previous testifier, that even without Act 73 being amended, there are pathways for it, right? So the city could continue prevailing upon the Navy to, you know, think about letting us use, you know, some of their lands, given that they have contributed to our current water crisis and water insecurity. There's also processes to redistrict, for example, conservation district lands that might include golf courses or other places that were excluded from the landfill advisory committee's consideration because of, you know, Act 73. So even without Act 73 being amended, there are pathways for it. It's not like, you know, it's all or nothing. Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, you know, also our strong position that, you know, the rest of Oahu should no longer have to burden, you know, bear the burden of hosting the waste of the rest of the island. Happy to answer your questions. Thank you so much for hearing this measure.
Thank you. I apologize, there is additional testimony present, hopefully Dr. Betty Ikis in support on Zoom. Not present. And then Alana Borsa in support on Zoom. Thank you. And Mariko Quinn in support in person.
Aloha, Mai Kako. I'll try to make this quick for you guys. My name is Mariko Quinn, and I'm testifying in strong support as an individual on HB 969. The Red Hill Water Crisis, as Wayne Tanaka just brought up, forced us to recognize the fragility of our water systems as we grappled with the realization that contamination of our aquifer would forever change the lives of people in Hawaii for hundreds of years. As we recognize that our water systems are still under threat from the Red Hill Crisis, further endangering the clean water would be incredibly ill-advised and disregards the years of education, advocacy, and struggle of our people here since the Red Hill waterspill. While I understand that this is not remotely the same issue and deeply recognize that we must select a location for a landfill, it is also imperative that we avoid the mistakes and learn the lessons that Red Hill presented us with. The lack of oversight during Red Hill's construction led to a hazardous situation that we cannot afford to repeat. Landfills are a forever commitment and reliably leak over time, which is worsened by rainwater. Given their lasting impact, any risk of contamination to Hawaii's aquifer from a landfill is simply too great to take. Working proactively, as this bill seeks to do, to protect the aquifer from any potential contamination that may arise is critical to the health of ouraina and our people. I strongly urge you to pass this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So in addition, we have testimony in support from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce, Hawaii Farm Bureau, Sierra Club of Hawaii, Yahtzee 665, Democratic Party Health Committee, Hawaii Farmers Union, Kupuna for the Maupuna, Green Party of Hawaii, Kalahui, Hawaii, and 65 other individuals in support. Is there anyone who would like to testify? Please approach the podium.
Morning, Chair. Vice Chair, Committee Members, Kiko Bukowski, on behalf of I B W 1260. We didn't have a chance to submit testimony, but we did want to give our support to this measure. We did testify at the city council in favor of Resolution 25-3, which supports the intent of this measure. You know, as a union organization, we have an obligation, not just to our industry, but to our members in general, and we feel the community at large. So we strongly feel that this measure is very critical to protecting our natural resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please approach the podium. And then if you wouldn't mind submitting written testimony, so if we can have that on the record, we'd appreciate it.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair and Committee Members. My name is Deborah King, and I would like to express, from a health standpoint, how this works. I was exposed, four years I lived in Naples, Italy, outside of Naples, Italy, and there was water contamination. And basically, the pipes, the water pipes and the sewage pipes were too close together, and they leached. And so I've been years trying to find out what is wrong with me, even though I went to the military base, because the symptoms that are presented by contamination look like so many other things. And I wondered why I had energy one day, and the next day I was drained. So I can technically not work because I can't do a 40-hour job, yet no doctor will give me a diagnosis so that I can get any type of financial support. So here I am, stuck without being able to work and without being able to provide myself for myself. So I want you to take that into consideration, because so many people have these symptoms that can be confused for other diagnoses, like allergies or whatever, and they're told that they're fine. In fact, on one of my health tests, my MRI came back that I have hypertension, but the doctor says, "Those little two dots look normal to me," but they sure don't feel normal to me. So anyway, thank you so much for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Seeing no other testifiers, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making.
All right, we are back. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, Thursday, January 30th, 9:00 AM agenda for decision-making. First up, we have House Bill 974 relating to energy. For this, we had a lot of suggested amendments on it, and it's a double referral, so we're going to defer this until Thursday, February 6th, end of the 9:00 AM agenda for decision-making. House Bill 338 relating to renewable energy. For this one, we're going to take Hiko's suggested amendment, make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, defect the date to July 1st, 3000, and move this forward for further consideration. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill 338, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan.
Aye.
Noting the absence of Representative Ward, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 337, noting there's also a Senate version of this bill. and we have a lot of bills on our agenda today, and there were many concerns raised about it. I think we're going to defer this at this time. House Bill 879 relating to cesspool conversion. So a few amendments here. We're going to adopt Department of Health amendments outlined in their testimony. We will blank out the 30,000 amount, just to consider what amount, whether we should increase it to 30,000, leave it at 20, or find some other number for the maximum grant amount. We will take out the positions added in this bill and use the other bill as a vehicle for adding positions along with the more robust language about creating a new cesspool section. And blank out the dollar amount, I think, actually, I think it's the $5 million, but blank out the dollar amount. But note that in the committee report, and defect the date to July 1, 3,000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
House Bill 879, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. For House Bill 379, we're going to move this forward for further discussion with a defective date. And we will make a note in the committee report that we're requesting DOH to review the criteria in this bill and report back if they may be too broad and need to be narrowed down. And pass that forward to the next committee. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
House Bill 379, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 798 relating to wastewater management. For this, we're going to delete the provision relating to energy entirely. So that's page 1, lines 9 to 10. And we will blank out the 10 million gallon number to consider what might be the right, you know, volume per day to consider this. And then we will defect the date to July 1, 3,000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
House Bill 798, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And we have House Bill 376 relating to cesspools. So for this bill, we will remove the tax credit and grants and make this a vehicle just to consider the date accelerations with the exemptions that are outlined in this bill. So we will remove all of Parts III and Parts IV, adjust the Purpose Clause accordingly. We also have some technical amendments, and we will defect the date to July 1, 3,000. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
House Bill 376, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 734 relating to wastewater systems. For this, we will blank out the appropriation amount of 150,000, but note that amount in the committee report and remove C-grant as a consulting entity per their testimony. Some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect the date to July 1, 3,000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
HB 734, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Right, House Bill 736 relating to wastewater systems. We have some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and we will defect the date to July 1, 3,000 and move this forward. And we are waiting to hear the amounts for this bill. So we'll hope that gets presented to the next committee. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
House Bill 736, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 735 relating to wastewater. So for this, we're going to remove the parts of this referring to the priority level 3 cesspools. So that is all of the language from page 3, line 10, through to page 4, line 4. And then in the part right before that, so page 3's, line 6 through 9, we're going to add language to that. So it will clarify that "A wastewater system can serve up to five bedrooms, regardless of the number of dwelling units or accessory units as defined by counties, whether attached or detached, provided that this does not apply to any new request to connect additional dwelling units with cesspools," based on the concern that this would then make them under federal law large-capacity cesspools, which are illegal. So we're allowing, we're clarifying that for septic or another type of system, it can serve more bedrooms. And we will defect the date to July 1, 3,000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
HB 735, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then House Bill 1421 relating to financing. Again, we want to keep this moving as another possible option for how to help individual homeowners finance these conversions. So we will defect the date on this, move it forward to continue discussion. And I think we'll also need to get, we don't have dollar amounts for that right now, so we'll need to do some work on thinking about that. But we'll move this forward for now. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill 1421, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Chair, seeing none, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And House Bill 749 relating to cesspools, we're waiting for some more information from Department of Health about these positions. So we're going to defer decision-making on this until, we're going to do Tuesday, January 30th, end of the 9:00 AM agenda. And then last, on this agenda, we-
January 30th?
Today is January 30th.
Oh, sorry, Tuesday, February 4th?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, guys. Tuesday, February 4th, end of the 9:00 AM agenda. Okay, glad we didn't vote already. And defect the date to July 1, 3,000. Members, any discussion? Oh, wait, we're not defecting the date or voting. We're deferring that. Okay, next bill. House Bill 969 relating to waste or disposal facilities. We're going to move this forward, defect the date to July 1, 3,000. Members, discussion, comments? Nope, seeing none, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
House Bill 969, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Okay, we are done with this agenda, but we are gaveling back in decision-making agenda Thursday, January 30th, Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, 9:01 AM. Decision-making on House Bill 786 relating to deposit beverage container recycling. So we're making some amendments to this bill. We're going to, on page 1, line 13, subsection 3, change that to read, "evaluate and promote recyclable market development activities, including but not limited to deploying reverse vending machines in the state." And then we'll remove subsection 6 on page 2 relating to vending machines. On page 2, lines 14 to 15, we'll remove the words "of the kind and size and brand sold by the dealer." On page 3, lines 4 to 7, we'll leave this in, so we'll remove that strike-through of the existing language, but we're going to change that distance from 2 miles to 1 half-mile. And then on page 3, line 15, we will reinsert that 5,000-square-foot stipulation for the size of the retailers that are exempt and defect the date to July 1, 3,000 and move this forward for further consideration. And I think, yeah, essentially what the law does right now regarding this is says that large stores should be redemption centers and then goes and exempts every last one of them. So we need to do something to increase convenience for, you know, being able, for people to be able to get their five cents back. So hopefully, we can keep having this discussion. So, members, any other discussion besides mine? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill 786, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Noting the absence of Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Chair, seeing none, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you, and this hearing is adjourned.
Oh, we have one more.
To say what committees are meeting since it's a joint hearing.
Oh.
My apologies.
Just we're not still in just EEP.
My apologies. So a joint committee hearing of Agriculture and the Energy and Environmental Protection Committee. We are going to make some amendments to this measure. First, DoTAX clarified that as written, this bill permits use of the carbon emissions tax and dividend special fund to administer the tax and credits pursuant to Section 3. And this fund should be used to pay the carbon cashback tax credit rather than being issued from the general fund. In Section 4, DoTAX recommends that the carbon cashback income tax credit be made non-refundable. And we are not going to make it non-refundable. We're going to keep that refundable aspect of the credit. And we're also going to take DoTAX's recommendation that we define gross annual income as Hawaii resident gross annual income. We're also going to adopt Section 4 of House Bill 1375 to replace House Bill 760's Section 4. So we're making the following changes. This is the way in which they're summarized. The qualifications for this credit will be any Hawaii taxpayer who files an individual income tax return, except dependents claimed by others. The tax credit amount for residents will depend on your filing status and number of dependents. So single filers and heads of households start at $40 in 2025, rising to a peak of 473 in 2034, then gradually decreasing. Married couples filing jointly start at $83 in 2025, rising to a peak of $946 in 2034, then gradually decreasing. Dependents receive an additional amount per dependent starting at $20 in 2025 and increasing over time. Next, with respect to the bill's changes to the fuel tax in Section 7, we're also going to take DoTAX's recommendation and amend HRS Section 24-3.5b8 and b9 to allocate a percentage of the total amount of fuel tax revenue collected so that it can be more easily calculated. And we're defecting the date to July 1, 3,000. Are there any questions or concerns?
I'll make a few comments. I just think, we've heard this bill year over year, and my feeling on it is that it's well-intended, but that we're better off sticking with our PS mandates and other laws we have in place to facilitate the renewable energy transition, that this won't have significant effect on those accomplishments. And it just creates a large bureaucracy to redistribute income that I have concerns about. But I'm voting yes to continue the discussion. And maybe this will be the last year that we have to do this, I'm hoping.
Rep. Kush, do you have comments or concerns?
No.
Rep. Kahlua.
Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
All right, we are voting for the EEP Committee on House Bill 760. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Rep. Kahlua.
Aye.
Rep. Kush.
Aye.
Rep. Quinlan.
Yes, me, aye.
And Rep. Ward is excused. Recommendation is adopted. And over to-
For the committee, yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
For the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, same recommendation as recommended by the Chair of EEP. Any questions or concerns, committee members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair, voting on HB 760. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Lowen.
Aye.
Representative Purusso.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Representative Ward excused.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing is adjourned.
Good job, everybody.
Good job.